States of America.
States of America.
Republic for which it stands.
Stands.
One nation.
Nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, school committee members and student reports, school committee chair report, I have nothing to report at this time. Resource Committee, Mr. Stevens.
Resource and school buildings are meeting tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Policy Committee. Mr. Horgan.
Yep, we met recently and we had a revision to the face covering policy that you'll be seeing tonight and it should have been in your packet. Um, we're specifying that the masks have to be two ply cotton and we're also adding the additions that we talked about in the last general meeting. Um, in regards to the MIAA. Uh, ruling for outdoor usage of the masks and we can go over those details when we um. Do the action item to approve that policy.
Great. Any questions from the committee? Or anyone? Seeing none, moving on, Ms. LaBelle Pierce, Student Support Committee. Some committee.
Hi, sorry, yeah. It just took me a second. Um, hi, yeah, we met on November ninth. Um. And talked about, um, well, we heard a presentation from Katie Mayo about a strength. Training program that she's looking to bring back to the high school. I guess she did that last year for a little bit and um, so that was interesting to listen to that Sally might want to talk a little bit more about that. Um.
Oh, sorry.
Um. Go ahead.
Yeah, oh, well, just really, really quickly. So Katie Mayo is one of ours, she was in uh, the AP Honors Academy, she uh, played volleyball for Pittsburgh High and she's now in a D1 school. But she's studying sports exercise science, so she is very eager to do um, a continuity on a program that is beneficial for young women. Both body and mind, um, which is weightlifting. So we um, had, I'm, again, some of you may remember her as, you know, a very, really little kid um, in Pittsburgh events. But she is very capable and I'm, she's uh, working with Coach Antucci, Coach, sorry, Athletic Director Craig Antuzzi. For the um, you know, the, the ins and outs of making this happen for our females, you know, once we're back to a hybrid type of schedule. So pretty exciting stuff, um, I love seeing alumni like come back and do stuff in Pittsburgh schools.
Great. Question, comments, yes?
Well, should I, I'll finish the rest of it if that's okay?
Sorry, go ahead, yeah.
No, that's all right, um, so we also, Mr. Roach was there and gave us uh, reports about attendance at this point at the high school. Uh, which is lower than normal, um, but they're also doing a deeper dive, it looks like into that because sometimes kids are there for some periods, but not all. So there, he, he talked a little bit about the strategy that they're doing to um, kind of. Have addressed that and then. Um. John Thompson gave us updates on the rest of the schools, um, so there, the numbers are lower than what they had been, but um. They're. They were still pretty high attendance rate, so um, they're not off incredibly like maybe some people might think and then. Uh, we did talk a little bit more about the inclusivity training um, that the school is doing or the audit that the school is doing and um, changes that they're making to. Some of the um, reading literature programs, curriculum programs and um. We got an update about what extracurricular activities are going right now and talked about getting more feedback about that because. Um, whether it was a question of stipends or it was a question of like, do people know that they could still run some clubs in remote? Um, generally, there was a consensus that we wanted to be able to see more club activity that was happening to just try to. Help kids feel like they have some connection to the schools and then um. We got an update about youth sports and what the plan was going to be about youth sports and going forward, so. I imagine that Craig and Tassi will come back and talk to the whole school committee at some point about that, but um. But there's no determination, there, there had been no determination as of November ninth about a winter sports, um. They voted down indoor track and middle school sports, um, Craig said. Um, and they're not likely to have anything um, before December fourteenth, so. And then we talked about just some additional training or what's happening for training of staff about safety protocols and what the um, and. Windows being open in the schools and how to ensure that all those policies are followed when we are back in the building, so. Thank you, sorry, I know that was lengthy.
Questions? Comments? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If you're. Uh. Through that, uh, I just uh, good briefly, I won't go through it, I met three hours on Zoom. Uh, a week ago Saturday with the uh, MAS C uh, convention and um, you will be getting. Uh, the results in the mail of all the resolutions, uh, they all passed with the exception of uh, monitoring. Uh, the attendance of students uh, during the pandemic and that was tabled. Uh, just one that I was uh. I guess a little surprised of MAS C voted to uh, lower the age for voting in municipal elections to sixteen. And that passed sixty-five to forty-nine, so um, MAS C will be uh, trying to lobby the legislature for lowering. The voting age to sixteen from municipal elections. And you will be receiving all of that information. In the package from MAS C.
They're, they're, they're supporting that uh?
Yes, they are. They're supporting it, the vote was uh, sixty-nine to forty-five. Now, they are supporting it.
Wonderful. Okay, is, is that all?
That's.
Mr. Stevens, you all set?
All set, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Um. No, there's no need for ex- uh, personal subcommittee, nothing to report, executive committee, nothing as well. I don't believe we have, again, we don't have student uh, a student rep tonight, right? Is that correct, Mr. Stevens?
Correct.
Okay, so moving on. Approval of the minutes for the previous school committee meeting of August tenth, twenty twenty.
Motion we approve. School. August ten.
Second. Motion made and seconded, we need a vote. Individually, Ms. Ms. Greenleys, if you would.
Yes, sir. Mayor Dean Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, next, approval of the minutes for the previous school committee meeting of. Of uh, November second.
Make a motion, we approve November second meeting.
Oh, second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. School committee meeting, meeting minutes from November second. Ms. Greenleys, if you would please.
Yes, sir, Mayor Dean Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Thank you. Moving on, communications.
Um, just a quickie, Sally. Hi, so um. There is a ceasefire in the Gornokarabag, also known as Artsak, but unfortunately um. Armenia has lost towns, so there's a lot of upheaval there in terms of the um, refugees fleeing into the country, the main country. Um, and surrendering their homes and there are some historic churches that are going to be taken over, so um. Anyway, my friend Guyon is back from um, Armenia and she has done the quarantine, I appreciate the mayor sending the proclamation. But I'll talk to uh, Joan about having, having her children come in and, and meet you, the mayor, because the families over there are so distraught, um, it is.
I would be, I would be honored, yep.
Perfect. Um, that is, um, that is all for me, uh, except for we have Be Positive has restocked the pet food pantry. At Ginny's Helping Hand, thank you, Mr. Stevens, who donated, um, so if families are in need of pet food, get in touch with Ginny's and they'll set you up.
Thank you, any comments? Any further communications? Public comment? Is there anyone requesting? That's my phone, sorry.
We have not received anything, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Superintendent, so now moving uh. Into the Superintendent's report, Mr. Jokla.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so tonight we're going to start off with a, a public health message, uh, I want to thank Chad Garner for. For marshaling uh, staff and students and creating a message that'll hopefully uh, start uh, bending the curve, so to speak, if I can go back to some spring vocabulary. Um, as uh, COVID nineteen uh, viruses back uh, in our communities and has recently been increasing, so um. By the good graces of F A T V and Nate Glenny, are you, are you ready to show the uh, video?
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Wearing is caring.
Recuerda usar siempre tu mascarilla.
Wearing is caring.
Por favor, use su máscara.
Wearing is caring.
Wearing is caring.
Por favor, use su máscara.
Wearing is caring.
Wearing is caring.
Usar la máscara es ser responsable.
Wearing is caring.
Wearing is caring.
Wearing is caring.
Wearing is caring.
Ponte la máscara.
Wearing is caring.
Por favor, use su máscara.
Wearing? Is caring.
Wearing is caring, go Pittsburgh!
Nicely done, great. Thank everybody that participated in that.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Superintendent, did you want me to, to interject my uh? My thoughts on this?
Sure, please, thank you.
Uh, just to kind of give you folks an update, we have been in communication with. Uh. The Lieutenant Governor's Office, who's just once again has been outstanding. Uh, and I, as you probably are aware, we are now uh, going down one level. Where Phase Three Step One, it's not a significant change, but the, the real message is in the messaging, so. That's part of what I'm, want to say tonight is that we need to redouble our efforts, we need to. Get back to where we were four or five months ago, the city of Pittsburgh, I thought we were going to dodge a bullet here, I thought. We were doing so well that uh, we were going to get through this pandemic and uh, with relatively uh, very, very positive numbers. Uh, without going into any detail, I'm sure you're all aware of why uh, these things have happened, these changes have come about. But we're, we're good, we're, we're moving forward, I met with uh, on conference call with the mayor of Lemonster. And the mayor of Gardner and the Department of He- Health and Human Services at the state level has been terrific and D P H. We're going to be providing testing sites. Two days in Pittsburgh, two days in Lemonster and a day in Gardner and there's also discussion and planning for. Uh, future use of our CARES dollars, CARES Act dollars, which we have uh, we have funding in that regard, Gardner has. A significant amount, I'm not sure why, but, and Lemonster as well, so we'll continue that testing on a regular basis as much as we can. But again, important, important to hammer home the importance of masks, the importance of social distancing. Try to avoid large gatherings, wash your hands. And the, things of those nature, let's get back, let's get back in the direction that we were going for so many months and, and get uh. And, and arrest the advance of this uh, this scourge, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first up on uh, tonight's agenda, I'd like to have uh, Sean Walker, who's uh, pinch hitting for Brittany Lavoie. Uh, this evening, uh, to provide an update on Memorial Middle School and the school redesign grant, uh, that we're in year two of, so. Sean? The floor is yours.
Thank you.
Just, we just need to interrupt for one minute, um, Mr. Glenny, if you could give me uh, screen sharing rights?
You should have them.
Alright, so I think, uh, I think we're good to go here, first of all, thank you for having me tonight, um, as Mr. Jokla mentioned, I am pinch hitting, um, the principal Brittany Lavoie, as you. Probably knows, at home with her new baby son, so. We've been holding things together while she's gone and she did a fantastic job of setting us up before she left. Um, we are in the second year of our school redesign grant, so I just wanted to take tonight's opportunity to go through some of the highlights from last year. Um, listed up there, one of the things that we, over the summer, as we started to um, debrief everything that had gone. Well, and needed improvement over the previous year in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. One of the things that kept popping up is that we had a lot of unplanned opportunities that we were able to take advantage of. We had many things that we had planned out trying to do and um, some of those are listed there, big one. Was improving communication and leadership in s- within the uh, school staff. And we did that with a combination of our D L T, our distributive leadership team and our instructional leadership team. Those two things gave a lot of people opportunities for planning and work in the um, operation and instructional practices in the school. We also had a lot of opportunities that we didn't expect to, didn't expect to pop up, for instance, um. As we started going through this process, various staff members started coming forward with ideas that we just hadn't even considered and were able to take some of those ideas and run with them for um. One of our teachers has picked up the management of the school Facebook page and sending out a weekly newsletter, that wasn't something that we had intended. As part of this year's plan, but when that opportunity came forward, we were able to capitalize on that. Another opportunity that we had that we hadn't planned on was when a group of students came forward and asked to start. Uh, diversity alliance and. As we should have, we immediately said yes and provided them with an advisor and a place to meet and. They were able to develop a diversity alliance that ended up including students from all grade levels. And um, we're looking to continue that work for this year. So um, if you could go to the next slide, Adam? Some of the numbers that we're able to work through, obviously, we weren't able to get an MCAST score last year, but. Um, our I Ready scores, which we're using to guide our instruction during the year, showed a considerable increase over the course of the year. So when we weren't able to take the MCAST test, we're a little bit disappointed because we're fairly certain we're going to do much better than we had previously. Um, access testing, we were able to do move nineteen students out of. English as a second language classes and move them into what we call the FLEPP status. And we raised student growth by forty-eight percent among that cohort. Um, and one of our other goals was attendance, we managed to really put in a lot of good work on attendance last year and. Cut it down to about eight percent. Um. Again, once we had to shut the schools down in March, things changed, but we're really optimistic that we're going to be able to keep that moving. And then a couple of other things that really kind of paid off with our new focus on um, classroom management, uh, system-wide classroom management is we're able to. Decrease the amount of write-ups and suspensions over the course of the year, which had the result of keeping our students in classes more frequently and we're able to raise expectations for them in those classes and we're continuing that work this year. Trying to align ourselves with the district's work on um. Equity and inclusion in the district. If you go to the next slide, Adam? So our focus this year is creating a culture of bar or better and what we're referring to with that is. Getting students opportunities to meet or exceed on a regular basis, meet or exceed the learning standards that they're being tested on every year. Providing them opportunities in class on a regular basis, every single student that we have, regardless of their. Background, their learning history, their special education status, every single student that we have, we are devoted to getting them opportunities. To see and work at grade level or better content area, content area and instruction. Uh, we put in a lot of work, especially during uh, the spring. Empowering teachers as experts in their field and working with them to provide professional development within the school. So we have a lot of work with teachers providing professional development to other teachers. And then the big thing that we've done, one of the big things, the big thing, one big thing that we've changed for this year, going into the school year in the remote situation. We knew that we were going to have a lot of work to make sure that all of our students were going to be able to log in every day. And take part in their classes and so with the help of the district, we were able to make sure that all of our students have the technology they need. And we also re-tasked some staff members to what we call the school engagement team, so previously we. A security paraprofessional and a paraprofessional that worked in the in-house suspension room and we've re-tasked them to school engagement. So they are every day from the time school starts in the morning until the time school ends in the afternoon, on the phone, making phone calls, calling parents, calling students, making sure they're able to get online. Reminding them if they're late to class, letting parents know what's going on and doing a lot of technical troubleshooting as students. Sometimes have trouble getting into classes or if there's issues with their connectivity and things like that. And so with that work and also with our school resource officer, we've been able to get out to many, many houses, um. We were at about a hundred and twenty home visits. A week and a half ago and I haven't checked recently, but I know that they went out on at least two today. And with all that work, we were able to average about ninety-six percent daily attendance in the remote setting. Um, that's a testament to the teachers and that engagement team. So that brings us to this year, um, we submitted our application for the second year of the redesign grant in December, on, excuse me, on September thirtieth. On November tenth, a group of people from the school and from central office met with representatives from Desi for kind of a, a. An interview that was a little less high pressure than last year's, but. Still uh. Made us a bit nervous and then on November twelfth, we received confirmation from Desi that the grant has been renewed for the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one school year. So that was kind of my recap of what's happened and where we're heading and if anybody has any questions, I'd love to answer them right now.
Um, I, uh, hi Sean, it's Sally, um, I have a question about the home visits.
Yep.
Who, who is doing the home visits and um, are you, are there cases where your, one home visit will do for a family or have you had to do more than one home visit? For a family because um, again, this actually a hundred and, a hundred and ninety years ago would have been the school committee's responsibility to go out and do those home visits, so thank you for doing them.
So what we've been doing is um, our school resource officer and our, what, we've titled our security paraprofessional, but there's not much. Work to do with monitoring halls right now, we've kind of tasked them with getting out and either, there's um. Books and other learning materials that families need, um, we've had them deliver the occasional Chromebook or hotspot when that's, that's necessary. I've gone out on a couple to drop off some art supplies and talk to a few families about issues that have popped up in the online learning. But mostly, they're going out and just trying to put a face on the community or put a face in the community from the schools. And we've even had them do a few home visits to check on um, student wellness and safety, but the majority of it has been. Either delivering materials or dropping things off or stopping by to help um, solve technical problems with Chromebooks and things like that. But mostly it's, it's eyes on our students, which we can't really get in the school right now. So the second part of your question was, yeah, sometimes one visit more than covers it, um, there's a couple of families that we've visited several times and. I have at least one tomorrow that I'm going to head out on, so.
Thank you.
This is Jean, um, so congratulations on the grant.
Thank you.
That's great and I guess my. I mean ninety-six percent attendance rate is also great, so congratulations on that, um, I guess my biggest concern is. How are kids engaging with one another at all, like um, I know that there are no sports at the middle school level and um, there. I, I don't understand like what might be happening like with clubs and what are the opportunities for students to just be able to talk with students and. On that, I'll just say, I love that you brought kids in for the redesign as well and I'm hoping that agency just kind of grows. Um, for all kids in the district, but yeah, if you could let me know.
Sure, um, so it's kind of a. That has been the, the challenge throughout the, the, the year is um. Both students interacting with other students and students developing relationships with the teachers and everything is much harder through a, a computer screen. Um. Teachers have been getting much more proficient in classes with using breakout rooms to get smaller conversations going. We've. Done a lot of professional development with that and a lot of practice with that to get better with it. Um, we also are starting up some of our extracurricu- excuse me, our extracurricular activities, our clubs. There's um, the A V Club is getting rolling, the student council, um, it's going to look a little bit different this year, obviously, but they're getting started, they had applications last week. Um. There was. One or two other of our after-school clubs that are, are getting started and we also have at the same time the Twenty First Century Program that's running virtually right now. Um, those things were, you know, the ones that have started have been. Fairly well received and we're hoping that that's going to provide more opportunities for students to actually talk to one another and. The, the, the parts of this that are missing, that, that are, are really challenging is that they don't talk to one another on a regular basis or if they do, it's through a computer screen. And so. Trying to, we're really pushing to get as many of those as we can, um. Everything is a lot harder this year, so getting the club started takes longer than it has in the past, it used to be, could send home a piece of paper and. They're good to go and now we got to get them. With the correct meeting codes and online and everything and it's just, it's a lot more work for the teachers to set up, so it's taking us a little bit longer. But we're getting there.
Okay, any other questions for Sean?
Oh, I, I would, I would just like to uh, come in Sean, for the hard work he does, I know what a hard worker he is and uh. Very much appreciated, John, thank you.
Thank you, um. I feel like I am a hard worker, but I also feel like I'm looking around here every day and I'm trying to keep up with everybody else, so I'm going to pass on your comments to the rest of the staff as well, if that's okay with you.
You bet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you much.
So next up, we have uh, Eva Kelly and uh, Luisa Fernandez to talk a little bit about the Pittsburgh family's first pandemic relief program. So welcome Eva and Luisa.
Thank you, thanks for having us, Luisa's here too, want to wave Luisa so we see you? Okay, so uh, Pittsburgh's Family First um, is um, a product of a grant that the Pittsburgh Art Museum. is um, a product of a grant that the Pittsburgh Art Museum received. Um, they received fifty thousand dollars from a Cathedral Fund Grant. And they are using it to provide pandemic relief for our families. Um, it's a collaboration between the Pittsburgh Art Museum and Form Pittsburgh, um, North of Maine, New View Communities. And um, I'm gonna have Luisa talk more in depth about the programs. But there's two pieces to the grant. One is that they're buying fifty tablets for us to spread um, the use of tablets in home daycares and facilities in this community. Um, so I'm working with Kathy Brady on where to place those on tablets. Once they're in and we get them all up and loaded with the Footsteps to Brilliant software. And then the other part of the, the rest of the grant money is gonna go to six drive-by events. So I'm gonna have Luisa talk about that.
Hi, good night, everyone. Uh, I wanna start saying that it's an honor for me to be here tonight. And I wanna thank uh, to the superintendent and Eva Kelly because you give me a voice and I really appreciate it. Uh, with that said, um, well, yes, uh, we are working today together with the Art Museum. And uh, what we want to put is uh, we want to put seed drive-throughs together. Uh, and we want to pass to the families um, food, uh, supplies and um, you know, home session essentials that they might need in this moment. Uh, as you know, this is a hard situation for all of the families and our students, and we wanna support them. Um, we are planning to uh, pass in each event around two hundred and fifty bags. And well, that's our goal. Um, I'm part of Informed Feature and Informed Feature is a small group of parents. I am the president with Caroline Collins. And uh, we meet each other through New View and this tour program. Uh, I am very passionate about education and kids, so that's why I'm putting all my energy and free time on this. Um, um, we had in the past, uh, with um, Informed Feature three events. And, and we passed in August, more than two hundred bags and around a thousand books. Uh, in September, we passed more than four hundred bags with school supplies. And um, I think a week ago, we passed uh, more than two hundred and sixty books and we served around eighty-seven kids uh, with snacks and fresh apples. So um, in my opinion, uh, these programs are very important for our community because create ties between the schools and the families. And we need that now. We need, they trust. Uh, we need, yeah, we need to hug our families. So I think education is very important, but create, you know, a beautiful and, and healthy relation with families is very important too. So well, thank you very much. And I wanna promise you that I'm gonna keep working super, super hard for our community. And we are gonna have more events coming.
Um, and um, now Adam has put up the dates of the drive-by and the time and the location. So Luisa, that was great. That's perfect.
Thank you. If you have any questions, email me or whatever.
You guys have any questions before we, uh, we're done? We go on to something else?
Eva, this is Jim Walsh. Uh, and thank you Eva and Luisa for doing this. Will families know with the drive-by events, what will be happening at each event? Or will it be the same thing for every date that's listed on the screen that we're seeing now?
So Luisa, do you wanna speak? Go ahead.
Yes. Uh, so um, the information is not out yet. Uh, we are working and putting everything together. But um, actually, uh, today I emailed Mrs. Laura from the uh, Art Museum because it's very important to spread the voice, you know? Not everyone has internet access. Not everyone has a smartphone. Not everybody, you know, speaks or read in English or Spanish. So I was thinking to maybe create videos, uh, you know, to, to, to post in social media and inform everyone. Definitely because this is our, our target is um, is school kids. Uh, definitely the schools are gonna be sending the information to, to the parents and families.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Any, okay. Thank you, Luisa. Thank you, Eva. I guess I just wanna thank Nick Capasso uh, and the, the donor at the Cathedral Fund for thanking uh, of our students and families. Uh, it's something that this donor expressly stated their interest. Uh, is not only the Art Museum, but helping the Pittsburgh community during uh, these difficult times. So uh, I just wanted to say that before we move on. So next we have Rowan De Manche, uh, Director of People Personal Services, and Adam Runda, uh, Chief Innovation and Intervention Officer to give a summary of uh, the S three program. And uh, what we're doing to help our students and families uh, succeed and be supportive of them. So Adam and Rowan, the, the screen is yours.
Uh, good evening, everyone. So the, the S three program is really um, kind of the nickname for our social emotional supports um, that we're currently offering in the city. And we have an S three team um, at every school except for the high schools. Uh, and that's only because that the um, um, the S three academy, which is run by Boston College, City Connects, and the Rennie Center, don't um, currently accept high schools into that program. Uh, but we are working with Pittsburgh High, High School to offer some of the same type of uh, professional development and offerings that we're offering in the other schools, um, also with Goodrich Academy. So currently what we're offering for our social and emotional support students are home visits uh, from staff members. This is happening at every building. Uh, Sean did a great job of uh, explaining how Memorial runs it and it's, it's similar um, at most other buildings. You can, it's mostly administrators, um, home liaisons, uh, and mental health staff that are going out and just really checking in on students, checking up on students. And um, really trying to get students to log in and participate, engage in school. We have our mental health staff, which include um, guidance counselors, school adjustment counselors, clinical interventionists, B C B As, um, the school psychologists, all doing um, office hours and meetings, virtual meetings with students. And there are also some in school happening. We are currently in the process of rolling out Stop It Solutions, which is a, uh, an app where students or anyone in the community can anonymously report anything anonymously. Um, this was originally designed for bullying. However, um, it can be used for mental health supports uh, or, or anyone who has any type of concern um, with a classmate or a student can use this. What would happen is it would go, the message would go directly to the building principal, um, Craig Schalfo, myself, or Rowan. And then we would be able to reach out to any of the mental health staff or teachers who know these students. And then be able to provide the right type of support for them. We're also having um, virtual, uh, virtual meetings with behavior specialists for students, maybe having some um, hard time engaging remotely or exhibiting appropriate behavior um, during our Google classrooms. Uh, the next four are highlighted because we're gonna go into a bit more detail and they have their own slides. So we are offering systematic student support meetings. Um, that is the S three academy. Um, we are partnered with Hazel Health. Uh, we have the Bright program in two of our buildings and we are partnering with our former superintendent, William James, Interface Hotline. So the systematic student support services is, is an integrated approach to um, identifying and removing barriers to learning. So this can be both academic and social emotional. Uh, for this part, we're really focusing on the social emotional because in all of our schools, we have a very robust academic data um, uh, meetings and, and intervention approach. So we're taking that and we are also uh, starting to shift that to our social emotional wellbeing. So what's happening is schools, um, this is administration, mental health staff and teachers are meeting and identifying uh, students who are having issues, um, either uh, engaging in, in, in learning because of social emotional or mental health issues. Uh, we are identifying either school or community resources in assigning actions or preventing the removal of barriers. Um, currently, all of our schools have a team except for Goodrich uh, and Pittsburgh High School. And that's only because it's not being offered. Um, these meetings uh, happened last year and they're kind of in hyperdrive right now because we are remote. Um, we, we are meeting with them uh, probably about once a month and they're really shifting their focus to help us uh, with offering some of these uh, interventions remotely.
Want me to talk about Hazel Health? Um, so we have the privilege of being the first um, town in Massachusetts to offer a telehealth, health model. Um, in a few of our schools, we're piloting. And so we've signed a contract that will offer direct um, services for our families and students um, with a doctor through a um, a telehealth model that's directly in the school. Right now, because we're remote, parents can still access it remotely. There are phone numbers and contacts that we can um, uh, have parents engage in. Um, so parents would sign on to the agreement with Hazel Health. Hazel Health will um, directly um, see a student right then and there and then coordinate with their primary care physician to do follow-up and um, with the student and the family. And currently, the pilot programs are at Crocker, Rhine Gold, and Long Show. Right now, it, and the company offers all the equipment um, to the schools and the trainings to our nurses that are involved.
So I, I'll just share, I had a little follow-up with our partners in Hazel Health today. And one of the other things that they're rolling out, it consents with families. So certainly embracing the home component along with the school. And they're actually also looking to put out webinars, ask a doctor webinars um, with educational blogs and further instruction in health and wellness. So that's up and coming. Thank you.
And we also are in um, our first year of the Bright program at Long Show Middle School. Um, and the Bright program has been at Pittsburgh High School for several years. And this is the Brookline Center for Mental Health. Um, it is a program that targets students um, who are struggling with mental illness or hospitalizations um, or chronic absenteeism. And it targets them in a short period of time into the program for additional support. The idea behind the program is to be no more than twelve or fourteen weeks. And they directly coordinate with all the general education teachers to get all their education, but they are getting this intensive support um, through the uh, the school. Um, we have the two programs this year and we hope to expand um, next year.
So we're also, excuse me, we're also partnering with William James College and they have an interface hotline. Um, so this is for participating communities and Pittsburgh is a participating community. Um, it is a one eight hundred number. Um, toll-free where um, anyone in the community, uh, they don't have to be a part of Pittsburgh Public Schools can call and get some help for um, referrals uh, involving mental health. So they're, they're, they're partnered with a, an expert that will match them up uh, with a referral that best meets their location, insurance, and um, what, what they actually need for help. Um, the, the interesting thing about this is we all know that the waiting list for, for therapy or mental health can be six to eight weeks. Um, and this, this gives them some type of answer within two weeks. It's, it's much, much faster. Um, so we're very excited to, to be, uh, be able to offer this um, to our community for help. So Pittsburgh always, has always offered a pretty robust social emotional um, support, uh, especially for the last uh, five to seven years. Um, it has been challenging since we've been all remote and there are some next steps. Um, and I completely forgot about our wonderful two-on-one state cell hotline. So this is um, kind of like nine-one-one uh, but for different types of emergencies. So this is for parent and family support, uh, domestic violence, mental health, housing and utilities, uh, for food, physical health, clothing items, um, any type of crisis. Um, anyone can dial two-on-one and get help at, at any time during the day. Um, so for our next steps for our, our students is we need to find a way to provide some of these services in person because though we are doing our best to refer, provide these remotely, um, you know, a social skills group, for instance, is gonna be done, uh, much more effective in person. Um, so we are working with um, Vanpool uh, to figure out how we can get students in. And we're working with the union and, and our mental health staff to figure out how we can get um, students into receive some of these um, services, whether social skills, social stories, anger management, uh, help with self-regulation. There's, there's many offerings that we typically offer during a, a normal school year that we would like to try um, to make uh, possible now. Uh, we also need to get the message out to the community of exactly what we can offer students. Because unfortunately, we, we don't get the opportunity to see them on a daily basis. Um, you know, as a former principal, one of the things that, that I found extremely valuable, and I bet you Mr. Thompson backs me up, is when kids are walking in every day and you see their face every day, you can pick up on changes in behavior and attitude and kind of demeanor. Uh, and we can make a quick radio call and ask for an adjustment counselor to check in on that student, see if everything's okay. We've lost that type of interface. So we really need to advertise to parents so that they can and for staff, we're continuing to refine our S three meetings. We wanna offer these types of plans, not for only students who are um, hyper or hypovigilant, who are, who are kind of withdrawn or, or overly active in class, but for, for all students so that we can move everybody uh, forward, uh, whether they are um, have adequate social conferences or not. Um, and we will continue to train our staff and, and offer kind of mini advertising while, while cameras are off um, during Google classrooms to uh, let everybody know uh, what we can offer and how we can support our families.
In addition to that, a lot of our schools are running staff support meetings um, to, to support our own staff and whatever concerns they're having in this remote environment. And we're also looking to um, provide more counseling support to our staff as we move through this um, remote environment. And if they're struggling, um, they'd have access to, to that support as well.
So this last slide is just basically on some resources for parents where they can reach out. It's kind of a one-pager. Um, uh, with, with a lot of um, different resources. They can try one. If, um, if, if they don't get an answer, uh, they can certainly try another. Um, a lot of these resources kind of overlap in some areas, but um, uh, it's, it's best to have uh, more than not enough. So that is it. Are there any questions that we can answer for you?
Any questions? There's a lot of information here.
I would ask, this is Jean. And so I know a bunch of you just presented them, so I'm not sure who best should field the question, but do you have um, data for like how much these things are being used in this, in the system?
Well, so for example, right now at Pittsburgh High School, we have two full-time clinical interventionists. And so they're licensed social workers. Um, in meeting with them right now, they are currently, between the two of them, supporting about a hundred and six students on a weekly basis for one-to-one counseling. And they're also running small social groups, just so kids can get to uh, in small pods to socialize with one another remotely as well. Um, they every school has um, what we consider a caseload. So they see individual students and then they are also um, running more running more broad social groups to support students remotely as well in in smaller pods.
Right, so every school runs an an integrated, excuse me, systematic student support meeting weekly. And there's gonna be anywhere from 45 to 80 kids that are discussed, depending on the school. And that is, that that doesn't include students who are already receiving support through a a LEP or special education. So I don't have concrete numbers for you, but I can tell you that there are there are plans being created for hundreds of students.
So could I follow up on that? So how how does a parent know, like, so if you're not if your child has not been on the radar or somebody's radar or somebody's caseload up still but they're experiencing really serious issues, like how do parents know they can access all this? Because I'm trying to think as a parent, if I've seen, like, I know I've seen, and my daughter's at the high school, I know I've seen like an email about, you know, meetings that like Jennifer Scott is holding about, you know, concerns about your kids or, you know, like, but I'm just, I haven't seen these things and, you know, I'm just curious if it's just because my kid isn't on some, isn't on a caseload or what?
Well, that's usually the student support meetings that schools are having. So teachers will make referrals whenever they have a concern. And usually someone in the building, typically a guidance counselor or maybe an administrative, or they may ask the teacher to reach out to the family to talk about what supports are being offered through the building. The other thing, though, we do community-wide want to do is, like the last page of this slide, is do a push out almost like an advertisement on a regular basis so that it's really apparent to students and to families what resources they can quickly access if they need them.
Yeah, exactly. I I'd mentioned before, the difficult part of this is we're not seeing the kids. Where we would typically be able to identify a change in behavior. That's why advertising this out to parents is so important, because they're the ones that are gonna be able to identify that something's up and then be able to to let us know so that we can set them up with the with the whatever the needed support is.
Any of the programs? Like I, the telehealth piece is is awesome, it's been rolled out already, like how that has worked for people. But but I'm, I get, I keep coming back to this point, like, how are kids talking to any of our kids? And I'm wondering if any of these programs use that as a method because seeing other kids. So I feel like as schools, we have to do more to actually let kids talk with other kids, whether it's through support groups or or things like that. So I'm just curious if there is any component of all of this that's got that.
So there are when when students are in social skills group, for instance, and I I just use that because it's it's probably the easiest. So part of that is actually interacting, students interacting with each other. There, so there there is things happening for students who we consider like tier two or three. The tier one student-to-student information is really happening in Google Classroom and breakout sessions. You know, advisory morning meeting in the morning. Our elementary morning meetings are something to, something that we should probably record and and kind of show what's happening. There's a lot of student-to-student interaction there. Crocker is still holding their whole school morning meetings where there's there's interactions between students. I believe that was posted on Facebook, their Facebook page. So there there is some, but there certainly needs to be more, especially since we're gonna be involved until January.
And I just, I'm sorry, I'll just follow up with this one last question. On the morning meeting season and that element, that's only for our elementary students, right? Our middle schools and our high schools doesn't do anything like that.
Long Show has advisory, I believe Memorial.
Memorial does, they do too, Adam.
They do, okay. Is it in the afternoon?
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you. Lot of great stuff.
One of the things I want to highlight is this this one at the bottom handhold, and this isn't student-to-student, but I this is a really interesting resource. What this does is it puts parents in touch with other parents who have been through a similar traumatic event. It's this recently, which is shared by Sue Doyle from the high school and Rachel Levangi, who is a clinical interventionist at Long Show, they shared this with Rowan, Alyssa and I. And I I think there's a lot of potential here to help our our families. It's it's, you know, it's one thing talking to an ex, a mental health expert. It's something else talking to a parent who's been through a similar event. So I think there's a lot of potential here and we have to do a better job of letting our families know that this is a resource and access.
I just want to say thank you because that's just a really comprehensive list of resources and resources. So thanks a lot. That looks like a lot of work. Yeah, if you can get it to parents, that's, that'd be great.
So that concludes our formal presentations for the night. And we'll be sending out a page summary to all our parents very shortly with a listing of all those resources as well as posting this presentation in English and Spanish on our website as well. So to move on on the agenda, we have two budget items. One is a donation of some books and AP binder test programs from Kimberly Chung with an estimated value of $400 for students at Pittsburgh High School to be distributed to families at drive-by events this year. And secondly, we need school committee approval for the acceptance of year two of the Memorial School redesign grant, which Sean Walker gave a summary of earlier this evening. And those are the two budget items on the agenda. And Mr. Horgan, do you want to take this opportunity to talk about the the face covering policy that we have the second reading for tonight?
Yep, happy to. So the fellow committee, we, you should have gotten the the policy in the mail and the packet. Very minor revisions that are being made from the policy that we approved on the 14th of September. So in the second paragraph, you'll see after that last sentence, there are no gray level exemptions from the mask policy. We added guidelines for what constitutes an approved mask will be provided by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. And the guidance currently states that a two-ply cloth mask or face covering shall be secured with ties or ear loops. And then the other revision that's added is down, further down the policy, additional requirements from the MIAA to be followed by the Athletics Department in accordance with athletics will be forthcoming. So that's it. And those are the only two revisions to the policy, so very minor. We're asking for for approval for the second reading. Any any questions at all?
Looks good, Adam. Looks very good.
Okay, that brings a close to the superintendent's report and it's time for the action items.
Bob?
Yes.
While we moved on, could I ask you to do one thing in the would you give us an update in the future on the steps of brilliance on what's happening with it?
Yep, I can have a presentation at the the first and only school committee meeting, meeting in December. So I will have an update on our early childhood literacy initiative. Features the footsteps.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Mr. Mayor, we're ready for the action items.
Action items. 21-19, 20-21, approve the donation of preschool elementary age books. AP binder test prep materials for students estimated value 400. AP material will be sent to Pittsburgh High School. Books will be distributed to families in drive-by events this year from Kim- Kimberly Chung.
Motion to approve?
Motion made to approve, seconded?
Second.
Second, thank you. Ms. Greenleys, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Cragan?
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yeah.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Thank you. Next, 21-20, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the following grant, titled School Design Grant, $312,333. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Greenleys, please, the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Cragan?
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yeah.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Thank you. Last and not least, 21-21, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the second reading of face covering policy number 5707.
Motion to accept it.
Motion made and seconded to accept. Ms. Greenleys, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Cragan?
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yeah.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, I don't believe there's any need for executive session, is that correct?
That's correct. No need tonight.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion for adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Ms. Greenleys, if you would.
Yes, sir. Mayor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Cragan?
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yeah.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everybody, buddy.
Yep.
Take care.
Good evening.
See you.